Nine set up right now. Tic Tac Toe.
Jake, where's your background from?
The bench.
Watsonville Road and 152 with the fire running up in the eucalyptus trees.
Oh, wow. Cool photo.
Yeah, they're right on the border of Gilroy, Morgan Hill, and the fire district's boundary essentially. There was a vehicle that took out a power pole, landed on its top, started a fire, and ran some fire up into the yuks. And one of the battalion chiefs thought, let's bring the quint with the ladder out. And so we don't have to put the yuks on the ground. It would have been a pretty big hassle. So it all worked out. It looks like they're rescuing a cat or something, Mr. Mayor. But they're not.
I actually, and believe it or not, rescued a bird from a tree.
What kind of birds?
I believe it.
It was a parrot. That had escaped and his wings were had grown back just enough to get him up into a tree. But according to the owner, the cat or the bird was scared because it'd never been that high before.
Well, that's too much.
So I do have pictures that I'll have to share of the bird rescue.
Fantastic.
Very similar to that picture right there. We're going up to a tree.
It is 5:30. We'll go ahead and wait one more minute and then we'll get rolling.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our community town hall meeting. Tonight, we are, we have Mayor Rich Constantine joining us. And so he'll say a few words and then we'll, after that point, we'll open it up for Q and A. And so I just wanted to make an announcement that this Zoom meeting is set up like we're doing our council meetings and our planning commission meetings. And so it's due to security purposes that we're doing it this way. But the attendees can raise your hand or Michelle Bigelow just informed us that if you're calling in by your phone, you can enter star nine and it allows you to raise your hand. And so please, for you callers, you can go ahead and do that when you have questions. And so just a couple of things that I wanted to cover before I turn it over to the mayor. The first was last night, we had a council meeting and we had two, two items on there. And one of them was on COVID and that's where we spent most of our time just providing an update. And each 60 days, the council is required to review the emergency order that's in place. So that's a local emergency that's in place. And so the council had to do that last night because, believe it or not, we're almost at that 60 day mark. And so we did that. And then we just provided an update to, to the council and the community. And quite a bit of time was spent talking about what it's going to mean to open back up in Morgan Hill. And so we talked about some of the roundtables that we've been doing about business resiliency and what it's going to mean for our businesses to, to open back up and for customers to feel comfortable going back into, into our establishments. And, and with that, the, the county just sent out a press release. Because as you probably know, the governor has relaxed some of the restrictions that are in place and wants businesses to start, certain businesses to start opening back up with certain protocols in place. And so the county, as well as other Bay Area, Santa Clara County, as well as other Bay Area counties, came out and has said, yes, the governor has said that, but we're still subject in, in our area, in our county, to the county's orders. And they need to, you know, review where we're at. But at this time, nothing has changed from the order that was effective on May 4th, which continued the shelter in place and relaxed some of the restrictions around construction, some of the restrictions around, around childcare. And, and so I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. But you'll hear more from us about what we're doing and working with our, with our partners in helping our community open back up when in fact, we're going to be, when we're able to open back up. And so with that, we'll turn it over to Mayor Rich Constantine and then we'll do Q and A.
Thank Christina. And I want to welcome everybody to tonight's town hall. And I also want to thank everyone and your neighbors for really persevering through these very unique times. Unique is a interesting way of putting it. But this is truly something that we've never gone through before as a community, as a state, as, as the world. So I want to commend everyone for their patience in this stay at home order. I know it's difficult. I know we're getting a little stir crazy, especially as the, the temperature starts to get to 90 degrees. We all want to be out and socialize and see our friends again. And I know our kids want to do the same thing. But understand that until there's a vaccine, until there's a, a treatment for the COVID-19, really the only thing protecting us from getting sick is what we're doing right now. So again, I want to commend everybody for, for following the, the county orders. And the light isn't in the tunnel. The, the governor did, as Christina mentioned, the governor did mention that there is going to be some relaxing of some of the protocol that the state has put on us. But it's going to be a slow process. It's not going to be an instant turn on as far as being able to go out. It's going to be like a dimmer switch. So we're going to, it's going to be slow. But again, I just want to ask everyone to be patient and I want to again, thank everyone for their patience. I also want to give an, an update, change my window here on, on some of the things that have been going on regarding tests, masks and grocery store bags and reopening Morgan Hill. So in regards to testing, thanks to state resources, two new testing sites open at James Lick High School in East San Jose and Christopher High School in Gilroy. Both sites are providing testing regardless of insurance or immigration status. Testing criteria has also expanded to include anyone with symptoms and asymptomatic people who live or work around vulnerable populations and residents that work in jobs that put them in frequent contact with others. County's new webpage retaining information about all of the local testing options is available on their, their website. The SCCGOV.org slash slash CV19 testing. And I'm, I'm sure there's a button on their website. If you just go to the, the normal county website, you'll be able to get to it. If you have any questions, you can always ask us to help you. Now, as you are aware, the county of Santa Clara Public Health Department issued a new order that took effect Monday, on the, on the 4th, which extends the shelter in place until the 31st. But we wanted to highlight one of the changes in the new order that impacts all residents and businesses. Under the new order, in addition to social distancing protocols, all businesses must now ensure that both personnel and customers wear face coverings when entering their facilities, except those customers for whom face coverings are not, not recommended. But those people who have breathing issues that can't have anything close on their face or very young children. And along with the county health department, we strongly recommend that all community members wear face coverings whenever out doing essential activities. That, you know, if you're out in, in contact with other people, if you're walking your dog, it's just best to have your mask on. Of course, if you're only with your family unit, you don't have to have your mask. But it's just a good, it's just good practice, good habit to get into. Grocery bags. Last week, the city sent letters to each of our grocery store managers letting them know, due to the national emergency, we have temporarily discontinued compliance checks and follow-up actions on requiring the retail stores to charge for single-use checkout bags. And then as we get closer to opening up Morgan Hill, we have been hosting business resilient roundtables. We are working on a plan to help our businesses get back open as we await updated orders from the state and the county. We are, we are working with our partners, the Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Business Association, and Visit Morgan Hill. We're all working with our businesses to prepare them for not only the, the, the time that we're in now, but for the future, when we're going to be getting time, we're going to start opening up. So more to come on that. But again, really appreciate all of our neighbors' hard work. And at this time, I will turn this over to Christina.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so now you can go ahead to the Q and A function and type in a question. Or you can go and raise your hand either by doing it within Zoom or doing that star nine. And then we can go ahead and field any questions that you might have. So while we are waiting for your questions to come up, I have a few different little things to share with you. The first is that the Morgan Hill Recreation Preschool Team has prepared at-home activities for your little ones so that they can learn through play. And so you can go and check those ideas out at our website, And so a lot of fun activities. So check those out.
And while we're waiting for a hand to come up, I don't get to see the leadership team in one spot that often. I want to thank everyone for their hard work and what they've, what they've been doing on behalf of the, all the citizens in Morgan Hill. I was complimented not too long ago by a citizen who said that I'm doing a great job. And I'm, I reminded her that it's not me, it's our team. And I couldn't be prouder of, of the hard work that our entire team is doing. So please pass on to your teammates, my deepest appreciation for all the hard work. This again, as I mentioned, is a very unique time. We're doing everything remotely. But it's what's, was so strange has really become kind of normal. You know, doing Zoom meetings now is just seem really, really normal. So again, I really appreciate all the work that you guys are doing because I know, as I always, the analogy I always like to use, we're like a duck on the water, you know, very calm on the surface, but paddling like matter in need. So.
On behalf of our teammates, thank you so much for, for sharing that. So we do have a comment on the chat and that is just FYI, for anyone listening, I went and did the COVID testing at Christopher High School this morning. Very easy to do. Thank you for Jennifer for sharing that. So as the mayor mentioned, Christopher High School is a testing location right now. Testing availability is really opening up and they're even starting to allow asymptomatic people to be tested as long as they're in contact with others and more exposed to getting COVID. So thanks, Jennifer. Next comment is from Amber. I would like to thank the awesome group of people who take our trash and recycle every week. Absolutely. They're our essential workers. We have a franchise agreement with Recology and they do a wonderful job. One of the changes that they put in place during this time is you can continue to put out more than your one tote or, or barrel. Additional garbage is not supposed to be left in just a bag, but rather put in a barrel. And they can still pick those, that extra garbage up. Question, how many COVID cases have we had in Morgan Hill? I looked as of yesterday and maybe Michelle Bigelow, you can double check as of today, but I believe we were at 44 cases as of yesterday. Forty-seven. Thank you, Harjot. Okay. And those can be found on the county's dashboard. They are now, and for the last few weeks have, have been tracking cases by city. They're also tracking convalescent homes and, and cases in different facilities that they're keeping an eye on because of the high concentration rate of cases at, at those facilities. I'm switching to the Q and A section. What is the plan for the Independence Day parade this year? So as you can imagine, there are conversations that are going on right now between the organizers as well as the city. And so I'm going to ask Chris if there's anything at this point that we're able to share with this, at this town hall.
Sure, Christina. Right now, the, the shelter in place order does not allow the, the parade, any parades or processions to occur. It's, we, we will be monitoring that, but likely will not have a decision until after June 1st on that. And, and I, I believe the organizers are really looking at an alternative approach to having the parade. It won't be the traditional parade because we don't believe by July 4th that we will have the ability to host a major event in downtown where all the people are in one place. So they're looking at some alternate formats for the parade, but it's going to be some time before we know if anything can happen on that date.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Another question came up anonymous. Is there a chance that Morgan Hill's businesses will open up independently than other cities in Santa Clara? So we fall under the orders of Santa Clara County. And so when, when the state put out their orders and then the Santa Clara County came out with their orders afterwards, we had to adhere to, and Santa Clara County had to adhere to the stricter of the two. We can't independently go less restrictive than the county or the state. Now, we could go more restrictive, but not less restrictive. Dawn, our city attorney, do you want to add anything else to that?
Nope, that's the answer.
Okay, thank you. All right. Steve, Steve wrote, "With the recent projections of revenue deficit and known deficit to the city based on the crisis, shouldn't all planned and projected capital projects be placed on permanent hold and repatriation of those funds be bought back into the general fund until Morgan Hill is solvent and liquid again with free cash?" Okay, so first I will inform this group that on May 15th, so a week from tomorrow, starting at nine o'clock, we are going to have our council and community budget workshop. And so we introduced the budget at a council meeting on April 22nd. And we did mention the, the capital budget, but we're going to delve a little bit deeper on the 15th. And so the question about our capital projects. And so you, when we have our budget, we have our operational budget and then we have our capital budget. And the capital program for the next six years, because we present it for six years at a time, does have projects in it. I think less extensive in dollars and projects than we've seen in prior years. But what I will say is that none of the projects are general, are funded from our general fund. So our general fund is the fund that brings in revenues from our taxes, property tax, sales tax, hotel tax. And the general fund, the primary expenditures are related to police and fire administration and recreation and so forth. So the, the capital projects are primarily funded from other sources. So sources such as grants, developer impact fees. We receive gas tax funds from the state. And so what we need to do when we look at our capital program, you know, is, is look at, okay, are we, we're going forward with a project, you know, is it primarily grant funded, you know? And, you know, and so then, then the funds aren't coming from city impact funds in that case. You know, we look at, another consideration is if you have a project, you know, what are the maintenance costs going to be once that project is in place? And so that, that's a consideration. If there are matching funds, that's certainly a consideration. And funds, many funds within the capital programs are earmarked. So if you bring in money through developer impact fees, you are legally, we are legally required to spend those dollars for which they're intended, which is developer impact fees for things like water, for wastewater, for streets, for stormwater. And you can't repurpose those funds and use them to pay salaries, for instance. But rather they're, they, they have to be used for their intended purpose. I'll ask Dawn and/or Chris, would you like to add anything else as it relates to our capital program?
Just, just in summary, I think the issue is it's not as simple as taking money from the capital improvement plan budget and moving it into the general fund. The vast majority of funds in our capital improvement plan, or almost all of our funds in our capital improvement plan budget, either have to be spent on the specific projects they're designated for, or they have to be returned to the people who gave the money to us. So overwhelmingly, it has developers. So if we were to cancel, for example, the Hill Avenue Extension Project, we wouldn't simply move whatever funds are left in that budget back to our general fund. We would actually have to return those funds. And that's actually particularly problematic because we spent a lot of them already on property acquisition. So if we, so if we don't build it, we'd actually have to dip into our general fund to repay those funds that we spent on our, on the Hill Avenue project so far.
Two other things I would add. One is going forward with capital projects also has the benefit of helping our economy recover. And I would also mention that the vast majority of our capital program over the next several years is going to be related to our infrastructure for our, primarily our sewer, both our own Morgan Hill sewer lines as well as expanding our sewer treatment plant. And that's in joint partnership with the city of Gilroy. And so that is primarily funded through developer impact fees. And in general, the sewer plant is also, excuse me, the sewer system is funded through user fees.
Christina.
Yes.
I would just add, you know, just out of everyone, we said it, it sounds very complicated on the rules regarding funds. But I note that as, as a city, we don't make the rules. We follow the rules that the state of California outlines for us. And that's why we have these, many of these separated funds. And, and we have the restrictions because we have to follow the rules that the state set for us. And I would also know that some capital projects will actually reduce the ongoing maintenance costs for the general fund. So some of them make sense in that way, too.
All good points. Thank you. Okay, looking to see if anyone has their hand raised or has typed in a question. While we're waiting, I think, Maureen, do you have an update for us?
Sure. I was just going to mention, we've mentioned it a couple of times before, but remind people about siliconvalleystrong.org, which is at the county level where they're organizing ways to provide donations and provide resources to let people volunteer in different ways. They've added some new things to their website. So if you haven't been there recently, it would be worth visiting. They have a little chat bot feature now that helps you navigate through. They've added a tool where you can look up where free food is available based upon your zip code or your address. There's still, I was on it earlier this afternoon and they're still updating a lot of the South County information. But, you know, that should be taken care of. So it's, it's worth going to. There's a lot of resources, particularly for people who are truly in need right now. And it's also a great place to go if you are wondering how you could volunteer or if you have funds that you'd like to donate to the bigger county effort.
Thank you, Maureen.
And speaking of that, I, I, I thank the team, but I also want to thank our community groups, our faith-based organizations, Community Solutions, Edward Boss Prado Foundation, Morgan Hill Community Foundation, Rotary, Kiwanis. And of course, it's not an exhaustive list, but I want to thank all our, our groups that have been helping our community and not only Morgan Hill, but our surrounding community as well in this time of need. I want to thank them for all the work that they've done. And as Maureen said, if, if you can volunteer or if you can give, those organization, or those organizations do need your help because they are helping so many. So I want to thank them as well.
So we have a question from Steve. Can the mayor please elaborate on how he thinks businesses will reopen in Morgan Hill?
Well, as the governor has said, there are some businesses that will be allowed under their, I think he calls it level two. However, it's incumbent upon the cities to make sure that we can allow those businesses to open safely. So social distancing will have to be adhered to, being able to clean the facilities, depending on what type of business will be allowed to be open. And, and those type of things will have to be adhered to. So even though it may come down from the state that you can go to the barber, which is not the case currently, we have to make sure that in our city, that we can make sure that it's safe to do so. Because as I said before, this is not going to be like a light switch where he's going to turn it on and everyone can go, go back to it as usual. This is going to be a slow process. So we're going to adhere to not only the state, but what the county recommends as far as how we can be safe and make sure that we can have our, our citizens go out and, 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 you know, go to the businesses safely. I understand that businesses that are not deemed essential need to get back to work. I, I understand that wholeheartedly. But unfortunately, in this time, we have to make sure that we're safe. Because the reason why the, the curve is flattened is because of social distancing. So we have to, we have to keep this up. So that's really what I mean when I, when I talk about opening up our businesses, making sure that we adhere to state and county recommendations. And that when we do allow businesses to open up, that we do it in a safe manner.
Edith, can I ask you to just talk a little bit about just briefly your business resiliency roundtables, the two that are coming up and how we're partnering with the Chamber and the Downtown Association, Visit Morgan Hill, to assist our businesses in opening back up?
Thank you, Christina. We've had four business resiliency roundtables and we're having the next one on May 19th, 10:30 in the morning, specifically to focus on restaurants and thinking about how, what is the new world for restaurants going to be? The other ones were on retail, hospitality, financial resources and manufacturing. All of those webinars are recorded. Information is on the city's website. And people can sign up for this websites, for these webinars at choosemorganhill.com/covid19roundtables. So that's one of the things that we're doing. We're sending newsletters to the business community with resources. A couple of resources that we've added on the website include things like, well, who's hiring right now? And who is open? Those are, were some ideas that were shared with us. People wanted to see that information. So right now, that is the effort underway. One of the conversations we had this morning with our partners, community partners, included what are the industry-specific protocols that are getting developed for the various industries? And can we start sharing those? So for example, there is a protocol for wineries and how they want the wineries to, to be able to return to work and the tasting. So work underway is looking at protocols. Even though they're always changing and evolving, we want to start sharing the best practices for the various industries.
Great. Thank you, Edith. I just put in the, in the chat comments, the press release that was sent out today from our county. And it basically, you know, goes to what I said at the, at the beginning, that the governor has come out talking about opening back up businesses and our county saying, yes, the governor's put this out, but please note, our orders still stand in place. You know, the Bay Area, Bay Area is unique and, you know, we need to review before we, you know, allow things to open back up. And so I just want to make sure everybody on this call understands that, that, that is the case for our county. So nothing's going to change tomorrow as far as additional businesses opening back up. A question came up in the chat, is there a way to appeal to the county and open up our city earlier than county guidelines? And, and I think the answer to that is, is, is no. You know, the, the county is looking at its, its cities together as a whole. So looking at the county and they're not doing city-specific changes. So their orders apply to each city. Now, with that said, you know, I just want to go back to, you know, what we're trying to do as a city is to help our businesses get, you know, get as ready as possible to open up, you know, and, and to think about what we as a city can do in partnering with the Chamber and others to, to help our businesses. And so that's where we're trying to focus. So as soon as the green light is given to more businesses, businesses will be more ready. Okay, how is the possible projected budget shortfall going to affect public safety services? Thank you for that question. So we presented our budget on April 22nd and it's called the recommended budget. And how we prefaced the budget was that we, at that time, had provided our best estimates on the expected revenue loss because of COVID. So impacting sales tax, hotel tax, property tax, recreation revenues. Outside of the, the general fund is the development services fund. And then we started the process of figuring out what our expenditure reductions were going to be. And so the budget reflected some of those expenditure reductions. And so the budget reflected some of those expenditure reductions, but what we said is that we're going to be coming back with additional possible budget reductions. And so we're going to be sharing with the council of the community what those additional budget reductions are recommended to be. And in looking at budget reductions and budget in general, our council years ago, I think in 2011, shortly after the, the Great Recession, put together budget principles that would help in, in good times and in bad times, and in principles that the council stood behind. And, you know, so we're referencing back to those, and we brought those to council sort of to be validated on the 22nd. And as we look to budget reductions, you know, we, we need to look to what our council and community priorities are. And, you know, as far as priorities go, public safety is, the council's number one priority. You know, we need to make sure that we're a safe city, and that doesn't just mean police and fire, but you know, there's, there's other areas, you know, that are considered to be public safety. Now, with that said, you know, are there areas in, in police and fire where we're going to be bringing forward some potential reductions? The answer to that is yes. And so we'll, we'll be bringing those forward on May 15th, you know, along with, you know, other, other sort of recommended adjustments at this time, based on our, once again, our best projections as to the revenue loss that we're going to anticipate. And the council has asked us to also bring back other scenarios, you know, such as, what if the shelter in place is in longer than anticipated? What if the restrictions that are in place are so severe that it takes our sales tax and our transient occupancy tax and our recreation revenues to take much longer to recuperate and to get back to a normal, or, you know, what, what we saw before COVID? So I think that's a long-winded answer to the question, but more to come on May, May 15th. In the chat, I see that we put the link to Choose Morgan Hill for that business resiliency roundtable that will focus on restaurants. And, so let's see, any other questions?
Christina, this is Jake.
Yeah.
Hi, to your point earlier about kind of helping local businesses, I just wanted to share some things that we're doing, kind of thinking outside the box with the fire department on some of the inspections that need to happen, prior to some of these businesses that will, we're anticipating them eventually reopening. So we're, today, the Fire Marshal's Office out of Morgan Hill had helped Specialize with a remote FaceTime inspection of their building. So we're just trying to think outside the box to allow some of these businesses that down the road are anticipating reopening, so that when they are, when that switch is ready to be flipped back on, that they're not waiting on us for some bureaucratic red tape that we're having to, to go through. So we're just being as proactive as we can. There's a few other businesses that we've identified that probably would meet that same intent, that they can walk their entire premises, because we've, we've been in there very familiar with the building. So, and of course, Specialize has been a great partner, and, and we were open to this idea, just to kind of get them pushed up with some of the processes that they're ready. Once we do, I just wanted to add that to your point earlier.
Thank you, that's a great example of how we're trying to work with our business community. Okay, I see a hand up from Nick.
Hi, thank you for, again, for holding these sessions. I'm just wondering, I'm going to maybe kind of tee off the last couple of comments, would it be possible to start to develop a playbook as we start, I'm realizing this is a fluid situation, but to anticipate based on each business sector, can we develop a playbook of what we should be thinking about now? So as things come down the road and things may ease up, the businesses are now prepared as far as a state of readiness to be able to kind of move forward with the self-validation that will be required, right, to the public health inspector for the county of Santa Clara. And so I, I mean, I just really loved the last two parts of what was discussed as far as the dialogue. It would be great to, to get a feel or a playbook, again, by business sector from the city, of the four or five things that will be required on your end to self-validate, so as a business, we can start to be prepared for that now. It would be much better to be in a state of readiness as opposed to a state of reaction. So it's just a thought. I understand that we're sharing a tremendous amount of really good business practices, but when it comes down to some of the practical aspects of how to open up a business, say, next week or the week after, where there's going to be a realization that we're going to have to do three or four things, or four or five different things, that are going to be important to do, that self-validation, it might be nice now, from a city perspective, if possible, to start to develop a playbook by business sector, so we can start to disseminate that. So as business owners, we can all start to be prepared.
Thank you, Nick. That's something for us to, to dialogue about and to talk with the, I think, the chamber about, you know, to see, you know, what they're hearing from other chambers, you know? And once again, a lot of that, I think, involves, you know, our partners, you know, even with the county, you know, in, in opening up restaurants, you know, so much of that is, is overseen by county health, you know? And, so yeah, great, thank you, Nick. Any other questions or comments?
I'm sorry, I was muted. I forgot to hit the button. To, to, to comment on that is also the fact that through the business round, resiliency roundtables that we've been holding, we've come up with some ideas regarding the fact that some businesses, not just restaurants, but other businesses are going to need time for spacing and, and having the, the flow of people coming through. So we may have to adjust hours, business hours, we may have to adjust outside spacing for people, you know, use, the use of sidewalks. We've already adjusted some of that when it comes to our restaurants for pickup. But as businesses start to come open, they may need to have, you know, parking spaces available for pickup and that kind of thing. So we've already had those conversations with some of our business partners, and, and as things come up, we're, we're going to be following that up with those. But it's very important that we do have a plan, and we are thinking ahead as far as when things start coming back to more normal.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, that was, that was quite a bit of time that last night's council meeting was spent, you know, about that, and what can the city do to help, you know? Are there any impediments that are in place now that can be eased to help the community open back up? And the other, the other topical area as it relates to that is, is the trust factor, you know? So how do we help ensure that the community is comfortable, you know, going back out in the public and going out to our restaurants and our businesses and getting back out there? And how can we as a city help with that? All right, well, I don't see any other questions or comments, and so I think we're going to conclude tonight's town hall. Thank you all for joining. One last plug for our budget workshop, a week from tomorrow, join us, starting at nine o'clock. We're planning to run from nine to 12, and then we'll start up again at one and probably wrap up by three or four. So thank you all, and we will talk with you soon. Take care and have a good evening.